Folks, it is 6:30, so I'm gonna go on and call us to order. Try that again. Folks, it's 6:30. I'm gonna go on and call us to order here. If you all would please just go on and take a seat, and we'll go on and get started here, so we don't have to keep everybody here all evening. We've got a pretty busy agenda, so I want to get started on it. But with that, I will ask Commissioner Silkwood to open us up in prayer.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Everybody bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, please watch over us as we make decisions tonight at our meeting, and guide those decisions for the best for our community. Please join us in praying, everyone in Hendersonville, for the victims of Hurricane Helene, as well as those in Israel fighting the battle for their lives. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next up on our agenda is a roll call, and Zach, are you doing this now? Or is this ca...? Okay. No, we've got a little... But Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Hardwick?
Here.
Hasty?
Here.
Longmire? Martin is absent. Silkwood?
Here.
Slattery is absent, and Coker?
Here.
Seven are present, two absent.
Thank you, Caitlin. Next up on our agenda is we have two public hearings that have been continued from our September meeting. We opened those up, took the agenda items, then those agenda items were deferred to this meeting as well, those two items. So those public hearings were left open, and they're still on that. Doesn't look like we have had anybody sign up for either one of those. I think we've got some folks that have signed up for citizens' comments that might be intended to speak on some of those agenda items. We'll get to that in just a second on that. But with that, I am going to declare the public hearing, continued from September 3rd, on the request from Football Five Investment Group to amend the comprehensive development plan in order to request a parking reduction. I'm going to declare that hearing closed. And then I'm also going to declare closed the public hearing that was continued from September 3rd regarding the request from JLR Property Holdings to rezone 74.9 acres from a state residential to suburban residential. Then, next up, we have then, as I just alluded to a moment ago, we have public comment times, and these are limited to just agenda items only. We've had four folks that have signed up to speak on that. So take those kind of one by one. When I ask you up to the podium, if you would, introduce yourself, state your address, and then you're free to speak on that for up to five minutes on items regarding on the agenda. But first up, we have Kathy Green.
Hi there, my name is Kathy Green. I reside at 442 Norman Way. I'm a transplant from California, lived there 50 years, and decided it was time to get a new life, and I came to Hendersonville. It's beautiful. I love it here. It reminds me of where I grew up. I found... My husband and I found a cute little community, Norman Creek. We live on Norman Way. We were probably the 10th or 12th home in the neighborhood to be built. At the time, we didn't know any of our neighbors, but loved what we found. It wasn't a community, it was a family. We loved the fact that we could sit outside and hear all the kids playing, and watch the deer and turkey roam in the area. We have 92 homes in the neighborhood, and I'm gonna say of those 92 homes, there's probably 60 families with children running around, riding their bikes around in the street, going to the pool, going to each other's houses to play in each other's yards. There's a new development down the street, Norman Farms. The reserve at Norman Farms is being proposed as part of the retreat of Norman Farms. There was a meeting a few... Last month to discuss the retreat at Norman... The reserve at Norman Farms, and there was a talk of a street going from Norman Farms and another street from Macy and Norman Way. The dish... The deal was, or the issue was, that the street going through Norman Farms was county, and Norman Way and Macy through Norman Creek was city, and it was easier to get things approved through the city than through the county. And they want to have the entrance to the reserve at Norman Farms go through Norman Way and Macy, and have 32 separate homes that don't even have a way in to get to Norman Farms. They're closing that section off and only want to have the street into that division come through our neighborhood. Macy has a smaller area of road than Norman Farms. We've had to deal with trucks speeding up and down Norman Way for all the construction up at the top of the hill, which is part of the rental homes that are being there. I have videos. I live at the bottom of the incline. I have videos of the cement and the rock trucks just speeding down. We have wildlife. We have children. We have kids playing in the neighborhood, and I really want to have the planning commission try to think about, if you lived in our neighborhood, would you want to have all this in your neighborhood with these trucks going through for a section of a community that doesn't even belong to you? So I ask that you please reconsider the allowance of the entrance to Norman, the retreat, the reserve at Norman Farms, to have an entrance other than through Norman Way and Macy, so that we do not have to worry about jeopardizing the safety and wellbeings of the family and children of Norman Creek. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Scott Thomas. Mr. Thomas?
Hello, Scott Thomas, 413 Norman Way, and just want to appeal to Better Sense on the reserve to have a egress and ingress into that community that is separate from Norman Creek area. Those are high-end homes. It's great, but they just need... It's not part of that subdivision, and just need an extra... And I think they're... I think the developers are saying, "The county is a little tougher. Let's go for the city. It's gonna be an easier game to play." So just want to appeal to you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Brian, you're gonna have to forgive me. Your handwriting is as bad as mine, so...
Sorry. I'm a left-handed. Brian Demoy.
Thank you.
146 Macy Drive. I'm also here to appeal on what we can do to find another solution. My concern was, the way this started, was a meeting being held in Norman Farms, not in Norman Creek. Only three houses in our neighborhood even got a letter stating that there was now going to be a through street, through my street on Macy, where my child runs around. So... And so, that's part of the wildlife they talked about. I admit that. So they told us, said, "No, it's gonna absolutely go through Norman Farms. It's not gonna be through Norman Creek. This is gonna be Norman Farms Estates. It's gonna be a separate thing altogether," when we had that meeting with the builder. And now, it's Norman Creek Phase III. And now, it's not even gonna have a road through Norman Farms. So it's not part of our neighborhood. They're not part of HOA. There was never supposed to be more than 92 homes in Norman Creek, when I paid extra for my home, and now there's gonna be a through road that used to be a regular dead end, that I have photos of, that is now a temporary dead end, that there's gonna be 30 homes. I'm fine if there's gonna... If what we're being told is that there's nothing else we can do, there's going to be development there. Okay. Is there another way we can send it through? Is there a possible other route that this builder will have to deal with? Because I understand that the builder only cares about their bottom lines. They don't care about the neighbors. They don't care about the kids in the street. They don't worry about that. Our road is very narrow. If we park two cars on that road, there's no trucks gonna get through there, because it's physically impossible. So if that's the... If there's no other option, and there's gonna be 30 homes back there, what is our recourse as the public and the people who live in that neighborhood for when they change it again? So I don't feel like they were very honest in the beginning, because they told us it wasn't gonna be one thing, and now it's being told it's something completely else. And what can we do when they say, "You know what? We can't sell 32 lots. It was originally approved for 78. Let's now make it 78." When does it end? And what recourse do we have? So I know it's more difficult for the builder to go through the county, or to do another thing, or to make it harder for them to get their 30 homes they want. That's fine, but that's their problem. Unfortunately, it's not ours. So I would like for us to be protected, and if there's another way to send those trucks and those additional homes, have another road out, it would be beneficial to, I think, everybody.
Thank you. And I'm gonna butcher... I'm sorry. Oh, no, that's okay. Well, you signed up. Now, you've gotta come speak. I mean, that's how it works. So that's... Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Now, you were the last one that signed up for public comments, so with that, I will declare public comments now closed. And next item up on our agenda is number five, acceptance of the agenda, and I will entertain a motion to approve our agenda as presented. Have a motion from Commissioner Silkwood. Can I get a second, please? I have a second from Commissioner Longmire. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next up is minutes from our September 3rd meeting, and same thing. I'll entertain a motion to approve our minutes as presented. We have a motion from Commissioner Altizer. Can I have a second on that, please? A second from Commissioner Hasty. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. That motion. And we'll note that Commissioner Longmire is abstaining for that, because she was absent from that meeting on that, so... Next up is item seven. This is a concept plan for Heritage Park, and Caitlin, I believe you are the lead staff on this, and so if you would kind of kick us off, and last from representatives, I get from, I think it's Parks Department from the city on this to speak on as well, just kind of be on standby on that. But Caitlin?
Thank you. So Heritage Park Concept Plan is the concept plan for the new park off of 119 East Drive. This was approved by the Board of Mayor and Aldermen back in 2019. There's a grant that the Parks Department has... is working on, and one of the things that is required by that grant is to get approval from the Planning Commission. They will be doing a site plan for any buildings that are built that will be coming before us here at Planning Commission.
Thank you, Caitlin. Mr. Gilli, you obviously... Most of us know you are, but for the record, if you'll introduce yourselves.
I'm Andy Gilli, the Parks Director here for the City of Hendersonville. Thank you all for allowing us to bring this to you all, and kind of check a box here that TDEC is making us check. It's kind of an unorthodox procedure, so this has been... There's a great timeline in here that was put together by our friend Jeff Kundoff with Barge Wagner, and a lot of work's been done by Barge and with Ashley and her team here from Kimmel Horn on this plan, along with a ton of input from the community, as most of you all are aware from a few years ago. As Caitlin said, anything with a building or anything, we'll have to have more specific plans. Come back to you all. This is an overall, general concept that TDEC has already approved, because we've already received the grant for $3.38 million. It's just a matter of you all blessing this concept as well. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to entertain it.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments from commissioners? Well, if we don't have any questions or comments from commissioners, I will entertain a motion to approve as presented. Have a motion from Commissioner Silkwood, Commissioner Altizer, or do you mean to light up or...?
No, just gonna second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Silkwood, and a second from Commissioner Altizer. We will now go into a roll call vote on that, and Zach, you're doing the roll... Or you're reading the results of them. Okay. Okay. But we'll move into a roll And I'm gonna introduce Zach a little bit later, but he's in a transition here, where Caitlin's assisting him this evening in this transition. And I'll remind everybody, just so everyone can hear in the audience, to kind of bring your mic a little bit closer
This is with... Sorry. Motion passes with seven yeses, zero nays, and zero abstains.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you all.
Very excited about having this in Hendersonville. Just checking a box, but this is... I know it's been a lot of work.
It's a big deal.
Your team, so...
Really big deal. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next up is item eight, is development plans. We have, again, referenced this earlier, we have two that were left over, or that were deferred from our September meeting, and then we have another one for Norman Creek Phase III. But we'll start with Football Five on that. Timothy, Timothy, you've got this one on this, so we'll let you kind of get things off, and we've got, obviously, representatives from property owners here on that, but...
Thank you. So this project was deferred from the September Planning Commission meeting. That September request was to amend the plan to allow a reduction in parking from the required 220 spaces to 125 spaces. Now, the request has been revised to approve a reduction from 220 spaces to 174 spaces. So that's an increase of 49 spaces from what they had previously. It also includes the elimination of all motorcycle and compact spaces. All of their proposed spaces are standard nine by 18 spaces.
Thanks. Do you... I know we've kind of had...
Yeah, we're...
...a few times.
We're close friends now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Fernando Croza, Columbus, Ohio. My son, Sam, and I, starting Football Five here in Hendersonville. He lives at 707 Shoot Lane here in Hendersonville. Thank you again for having us here. I've got some smart dudes behind me that are gonna go over the new site design that we've developed to add more parking spots. So, you know, we heard you guys try and get 50 more parking spaces, and you'll seriously consider voting in our favor. Small family of four, cannot drive a motorcycle to soccer field, not gonna put Shrek feet and Cinderella shoes. So today's presentation, and also Wendy's not here, Ms. Slattery's not here, but she wanted to do a parking study somewhere closer, somewhere more relative to what we're trying to do. So we've done all that, and we're gonna be very quick, because we took way too much time last time.
Chuck Messer, Columbus, Ohio. I am the project manager on this bad boy. So as you guys can see, we have added some additional spaces, increasing from our previous 127 to 174. We had to add some additional retainer walls to the north end of the property, and as you can see, we expanded that parking lot to the north end, eliminated the outdoor pickleball courts on the back of the property, on the backside of the building that we were proposing, so we can push that parking closer to the building to add some additional spaces. The biggest change that we had was to the north end of the field. We eliminated those compact spaces that were there, as well as the six motorcycle parking spaces that were to the east side of the property, and added full-size spaces there. So all of our proposed 174 spaces are full-size spaces, and adding some additional retainer walls to right there between the parking lot and the field. That was not there before. We were gonna use that off grading, and that's kind of the adjustments that we've made to this point. Any questions on the site? Kyle is our lead engineer as well, so he's been the one that's designed this thing and been making the changes for us, so he is also here to answer any technical questions that you guys may have.
Thank you. With that, I'll open up to questions, comments from commissioners. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Well, first of all, thank you all for hearing, you know, and responding to what the commission said last time. I can... I understand you put a lot of work into trying to see what we were trying to accomplish together and making that happen. A quick question. So do you still have the parking agreement with ServPro? Okay.
At this point, yes.
That would only put you around 20 spaces short, so...
Correct.
In my view, I think you've come a long way, and I think I could support it at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Silkwood. Other questions, comments for commissioners? Not immediately seeing any. I just have questions for self. When you all eliminated... You mentioned eliminating pickleball on that. How many spaces did that get you from just that change by itself?
I mean, it would be hard to quantify, but it allowed us to kind of rework that north side, whereas before, we just had kind of a standard T, where now we kind of have like a little awkward jut out, and we were able to gain probably 16 spaces or so.
So this is a significant number.
And we could add an additional, probably 12 to 14 spaces, swapping some of these standard spaces out for compact, and throw in some motorcycle spaces there. I mean, this... You know, there is an indoor recreation aspect to this project, you know, I think a gym kind of facility, you know. I don't think it's uncommon for somebody to show up to a gym on a motorcycle. You know, that would be a space that would be dedicated to, you know, that application. But as of now, we have 94 spaces dedicated to that soccer field. I mean, that's a good amount of people coming to a, you know, kind of a training-type soccer field, so...
Thank you. I'll just... Since you brought it up, I'll just... I'd prefer less parking spaces, but full-size on that, just knowing this community on that, and just the availability on that. And a little personal bias, too, with two SUVs and a truck in my house.
And we heard that from the last meeting. That's why we, working with Timothy, we eliminated those compact spaces right there to the north end of the building, turned those to full scale, added some additional retainer walls, but it was achievable, so...
I'll echo the sentiment expressed by Commissioner Silkwood. Y'all have come a long way on this, and we appreciate you working with us, and know sometimes it's a little bit... Sometimes it's a little bit messy, but the what's... I think we've got a good end result here on that, and just with that, I'd be inclined to support what y'all have proposed here tonight as well.
Thank you. So I just got a couple more slides. I'm gonna hammer through this. At one point in time, I did a speech in front of Workers' Comp Bureau on San Diego, and I spoke so much that somebody on the board said, "If you just shut up, we're getting ready to vote in your favor." So if I'm anywhere near there with any of you guys, just take a sip, and I'll know when I'm done. So I appreciate that Kyle spent more time on the design. Certainly, it's a financial investment that we're willing to make, and we did hear all of you, and we do feel that the number of 174 is a strong number. It's still gonna be a beautiful facility, still one soccer field. So I wanted to truly... We did spend some money on an official parking study, and we had that information the last time. It wasn't near Hendersonville, and it wasn't completely apples-to-apples, so it was somewhat discounted. We do have... We do still have the overflow parking arrangement with our friends at ServPro as well. But what we did, instead of spending money, I asked my son to go to Liberty Creek High School two weekends ago. The exact soccer club that we're gonna be partnering with, Tennessee United, had a big tournament here in town. Maybe some of you participated in it or visited, but at this facility, they had one soccer field, and they had three games on Saturday and three games on Sunday. So Sammy went there, and he counted cars, and people, and players, and referees. And so this is September 21st. I think this is in Gallatin, very, very nice high school. And again, perhaps all of you have seen this, the soccer field is down at the bottom, sort of towards the right, and there's a parking lot that has 148 spots directly in front of it. 148 spots. And then north of that is a baseball field. There was a baseball game going on the entire weekend there as well. When we go at the... Look at the data, you'll see that not... At no time were there 148 cars in that parking lot. And you got the football field to the right, and then there's the high school farther to the right. You can't see, but there's parking there that I imagine the baseball fields, the track and field, and the soccer fields, and the football fields would enjoy that overflow parking or their primary parking. But on this particular day, it was all about soccer with a little bit of baseball. And so, I'm sorry, 143 parking spots. The tournament had three games on Saturday, and the first game started at, I believe, the game started at 9:25. Okay? At 9:00, he counted 59 cars, and there were 43 players with coaches and officials, 48 fans sitting in the stands of the soccer field, just the soccer field. So he took readings every 30 minutes, and then, as I wanted more. So it climbed up at 9:30 to 87. Cars parked. The players, obviously, did not change. At 10:00, it peaked, and that's because the next game started at 10:50. And that's what I was trying to explain to you the last time, you know. And again, a lot of us have grandkids and/or kids that play the game an hour before the next game, is when the other teams come, they start warming up, and that's when you're gonna get the highest number of cars parked in there. About 30 minutes after the second game starts, it goes down a little bit. And you could have nine games in this field, and the cycle would... The trend would just go up and down just like that. And that's what we saw. We saw it on Saturday, and we saw it on Sunday. At 10:30, the number climbed to 115, dropped down to 100. The peak happened at noon of Game Three, and again, the Game Two started at 10:50, so right at noon, you had 129 cars, and that's as high as it ever got on that particular day, and I don't think it got higher on the next day. And this was a beautiful day. This was... If you remember, on this particular day, Saturday, September 21st, in the fall, there is no better time for a soccer tournament. Football Five has one soccer field just like this. We don't have a baseball field. We don't have a football field. There are also people playing in football as well. I don't... I didn't ask him to count the cars on the other side. But this, in my opinion, is our Super Bowl. When we have a tournament, when Tennessee United has a tournament, they need our field. It can't get any worse than this, in my opinion. It can't. Because the number of players isn't gonna change, whether whatever size field we have, you know, grass or turf, or however many parking, the numbers are gonna be the same. The next day was the finals, right? So you could argue, "Hey, you know, this is the finals. This is where all the fans are gonna come. Their grandparents are gonna come. See my kid win a championship." The first game started 8:25, I believe, and at 9:00, or rather, at 9:30, it peaked to 72 out of 143 spots. Game Two got up as high as 103 at 10:00, and then it totally dropped off. And again, the most number of cars that we saw was on Saturday at 129. So we felt that, you know, the proximity to... Moreover, really, the team that we're partnering up with, the Tennessee United Club Soccer Program that we're gonna be running, you would see something like this. This isn't open rec soccer. I don't know. I don't know if open rec soccer would draw more fans. I doubt it. I think that this is about as much as you're going to get. Well, I won't talk about booth business unless you guys want to. I don't see anybody sipping their cups or putting their hands behind their head sipping the cups. Okay. Does anybody have any questions, though, about the data?
Any questions, comments from commissioners? I didn't want you to talk yourself out of a cell here on that, so we're...
Appreciate it.
With that, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve as presented, as revised, presented with all staff comments. Can I get a second on that, please? I have a second from Commissioner Hardwick. We will now go into a roll call vote. Zach, will you read the results? I know you're still tallying down there. Zach, will you read the results? I know you're still tallying down there.
Motion passes with six yeses, one no, and no abstains.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
All right, thank you very much, Gus.
Appreciate it.
Next up, we have on the agenda is another development plan, this one again is continued from last month. This is for JL, JLR Caldwell Drive. This, let's see, Grant and Caitlin both were on this and do we have a representative from the developer present? I have you on standby here on this, but, okay, we'll let Grant go on and kind of take the lead on this.
Thank you, Chairman Coker. So since last month, the developer has amended the plan and page three shows the zoning map and the land use maps as we kind of talked about last month, page three in your also reports. The, the land use is consistent with, with everything around it. However, the zoning is all ER and currently, this is ER and everything around it's ER with the acre lots. So, so that is a little bit of a change based on that, but it is also adjacent to Goodlettsville. And looking at this, page three of the report also says, talks about the offset intersection, that has since been fixed to a degree and if you go to page five, that updated proposal is shown. That's showing that basically they've, they've amended the road and I think there may be a better diagram of that on the presentation there, there we go. So they've updated the road in and out of that development, the connection with Caldwell Drive. And basically, it looks like they've, they've updated the, just connected it to the existing driveway and are using the existing driveway entrance, which does not meet city requirements. So we, we have talked to them, we've, on our report, we stated that that would have to be upgraded to an actual road entrance and if that was, that will be, to be approved. And the open space was also moved from the floodplain, I mean, sorry, from the floodway, from the floodplain and now, it is now adjacent to the, the new homes that are proposed. The, still doesn't have amenities as part of that though, but moving into the floodplain as opposed to the floodway does, does meet that requirement of the, so much percentage of the open space has to be within, within the, the floodplain rather than the floodway or out of the floodway essentially. And looking at this, all the road frontages also require sidewalks, they, they did not propose that with this, this plan as we had put on there previously as a comment, that still was not addressed. And there were so, still several staff, staff comments that were not addressed as part of that from, from planning. One of the things, but they did agree to all the staff comments prior to this meeting. One thing we need to look at is a preliminary development plan rezoning. The planning commission should refer to page seven in the report. There's comment 16 in the staff comments and the findings of fact for a positive or negative recommendation, BOMA. And that would be what to lean on, on, on the approval or denial.
Thank you, Grant. Andy, do you have anything that you'd like to add before we open up for questions, comments?
Certainly, so it was not our intention to not let any comments go unaddressed, so if those.
Do you mind stating your name?
Yes, thank you. Andy Leith, Greenlee Design, representing the owner.
Thank you.
So it was not our intention to not let any comments go unaddressed, we've read through the staff report. I think what, we're in agreement with all comments. We need to illustrate it better on the entrance, it was not our intention to reuse the driveway even though that is illustrated. The owner knows he's gonna have to build a street to city standards. However, they also have decided to make this private, so a private street, so it wouldn't be a city street, but it will still be to the standards that the fire department requires, probably going to be 26 foot wide because it is going to be their fire apparatus access road. Cul-de-sac is standard for what Hendersonville requires as well for turnaround radius. But I'm still happy to answer any of your questions or if maybe staff wants to bring up some of those comments that were not addressed and I'll address them right now.
With that, I'll open up to questions, comments from commissioners. Commissioner Silkwood.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you for being here tonight. Could you address, I noticed in the staff comments that they talk a little bit about how there is a retaining wall that is now, excuse me, blocking the drainage from a neighbor's pond that apparently used to drain into the existing creek and that's now been blocked by something that the homeowner or the property owner has done. Can you address that?
Sure. The staff did point out a pond to the north, it's not showing up in this view right here, but we do know where that's at. I've already discussed with the owner, he's going to have to make sure that that water gets down to his pond. We are aware of the situation, we know about it. And just to make the body feel, or we're moving forward, the hydraulic determination and wetland evaluation is scheduled to be done next week to identify those things that need to be protected or remedied.
Other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hasty.
Are they public or private streets?
They're gonna be private streets.
Private streets?
Yes, sir.
But they will be built 100% of city standards?
They have to be, yes.
We would, so we would like to request that, we're gonna have two sidewalks on both sides of the street in front of the homes. We would like to request to only do sidewalks down to Caldwell on one side of the road. Not trying to save money, but it just seems a little unnecessary that the rest of that won't develop out on either side of that, being a private street. But it does get people down to Caldwell. If this body's gonna require two sides, we'll build two sides. I'm just, this doesn't seem like it would be necessary to have two sides from where the homes stop down to Caldwell.
And I might, I could share something on that.
Director Free?
Yeah, on the sidewalks, that could be something because this is a planned development. So you could address the sidewalk issue now or it can be addressed later if this is all approved and then they do the subdivision plat, then they could request a waiver or a deviation from the subdivision regulations on the sidewalk. So it could, it could, it could be addressed right now or it could be addressed later as well.
I mean, we're definitely not gonna let the sidewalk on that, not putting that section of the sidewalk in be a negative recommendation. So if it's necessary, then we'll certainly agree to it.
Okay. Thank you, Free.
Chairman, would it be okay if I asked you a question? One of the other things that we noted was that on the development plan, anything that's part of the development plan, especially particularly along Caldwell Drive, that, that would also require sidewalks and that was one thing that I probably wanted to bring up if, if we're gonna kind of discuss the sidewalk situation.
Thank you for that clarification, Grant. Commissioner Hardwick.
So 12 Stones is in Goodlettsville.
Correct.
So does the city line run down the middle of the street?
Caldwell, that's a good question and I do not know where the Goodlettsville city limits would be. Might be a question for Stephen to answer what Hendersonville maintains out there.
Just curious if there were to be a, an oops, bump, crash, do you call Goodlettsville police or do you call the Hendersonville police?
I'm, because this entire property is in Hendersonville city limits, I'm going to assume the road belongs to Hendersonville. And it's not half and half.
So the same thing, same thing with. Same thing with fire department, I guess, you know.
Well, this is.
It's gonna have to be serviced from a Hendersonville fire station.
This will, our development will, yes, because this is in the city limits of Hendersonville right now.
One of the comments that was made is last month is that you guys were looking to develop homes that were equivalent to Fairview Plantation, I believe was the wording that was used, I could be wrong with that. Is that still the intent and you're willing to put all of that in writing?
We are, the developer is Mr. Runyon, he lives in the home on this property. The builder is McPherson Shaw, which is built in Hendersonville, they build a lot of the homes in plantation and this is, some of that is their product that's existing right there. And so, yes, I believe they are willing to put that in writing.
Perfect.
And, and you brought up 12 Stones, so to compare the lot sizes that we're proposing are very, very similar, if not almost identical to most of the lot sizes in 12 Stones. In our density, if you look at this project overall, because most of the leftover farm is in the floodway, floodplain and it's not going to be developed, we're at a 0.3 units per acre density if you look at the entire farm as in totality. So we're about half the density of 12 Stones.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chairman. Andy, I know that Mr. Runyon's got, got a plan here and I know that there's something in mind, but I'm not understanding why he would want a road on three and almost four sides of his house. That's a very nice house out there. Does, does it not make more sense to, to connect the road directly across from 12 Stones and go below his house? And he's got a private backyard and, and that's nothing with what we have to do up here, but.
That's right.
I'm just curious as to, is there another plan that maybe we don't know about?
No, but I, maybe I can shed some light on that. So if we have an aerial view that shows this, I guess this is good enough right here. So if you've ever been out to his house, okay, so when you're driving down his driveway, he has a basement entry on the left-hand side of the page here and he feels like that it would be less intrusive on people getting in and out of the subdivision to pass on the page right hand side of his house, excuse me, on the eastern side of his house instead of the western. I did specifically have this conversation with him, like, hey, why not just run on the western side of your house and back? But it's his personal preference and he has a pool right behind the house and he feels like that it would just be more intruding into his private space by putting the road on the western side of his house as opposed to the eastern. Also, you know, he's trying to make this an active farm and horse boarding facility and he wants to reserve as much of the space right in front of the house for pasture. That's why we're coming in with a traffic circle, 90 and over to the east and another traffic circle. You know, what I suggested to him was just sort of make a nice, long curve right in front of his, in his front yard, but he wants to reserve that for pasture. And when the 2010 flood happened, the front yard in front of his house is the high ground for the horses. So he's trying to, I mean, honestly, he's trying to reserve as much of it as he can to put the horses there if something else happens.
Well, that, that does answer part of my question that the, the horse boarding is gonna continue there and if it does, there will be considerable traffic on both roads at that point. It, it just seems to me like that would eliminate the privacy of his primary residence, but.
And one of the reasons we put the circle like right in the, right when you come off of Caldwell, that traffic circle is because he still wants to keep his, his driveway gated and so this allows the traffic to come in, get to the back part of the subdivision or him to get to. We would relocate the gate outside the traffic circle so that he can still get off his driveway. Yeah, that's very helpful. And it's his intention too, and we've discussed this and he's willing to put this in writing as well, that a lot of the amenities and if you've been out to his farm and I have and I've rode the trails with him, he's got a trail system along the creek and between this and Mossright Park. So he's, he's willing to put it in writing, open this up to the subdivision to like, use my farm, use my pond, go fishing in it, walk the trails. It's really a beautiful piece of property, it's a shame that most of it's in the floodplain, but it's a nice place.
Commissioner Silkwood.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, I can't disagree, the, the homes are beautiful and, you know, the concept seems interesting. However, I still have some major safety concerns. Yes, you fixed, fixed the offset intersection, but there's not a proposal for a traffic light. That's a very curvy, hilly road, there, people will be coming and trying to turn in another subdivision there. Your own traffic study or report says you're gonna have 176 new vehicular trips. That's just from the residents and apparently tonight, we learned that additionally, there'll be a commercial horse boarding there, so it's additional trips. There's only one way in and one way out, so. Other than the offset intersection, I really don't see many changes. I don't really see that you all have taken what we said last meeting to heart and brought forth any remedies. That's my comment.
Thank you for your comment. Again, that was not our intention to try to disregard what this body said. We, we did take this, we do take this very seriously. This is the entitlement phase and one of the staff comments was to make improvements on Caldwell Drive. We don't know what those improvements are gonna be without a traffic study. We're certainly willing to make whatever improvements are warranted on Caldwell Drive that any traffic study would, would show that we need to do. Just putting a traffic light in, I doubt that the city would say, yes, do that without it being warranted. But if this development warrants a traffic light, that would be a requirement of the construction plans and the moving this past the entitlement phase. And we're, it's one of those technical issues that we're probably not gonna have a choice whether to do it or not. If that's what the traffic study says do, that's what we will have to do to build this. So I'll, I'll be happy to show on the plan something, but we have not performed a traffic study yet. If this body would like to see a traffic study at the planning stage, then I'll take that back to my client and see if they want to do that. We've already, we already have the flood study underway, which would normally be at construction plan phase. We're already doing the HD, so it's not an issue if he's not wanting to invest the time and effort into it. We're just wanting to make sure that we're, you know, being responsible with what, what comes first.
Commissioner Hardwick.
Just in follow-up to, if you were to talk about a traffic light, I think we gotta figure out, is that a city Hendersonville traffic light or is that a city of Goodlettsville traffic light? Because right now, we don't know.
Well, and, and again, this, this property is in the, is in the city limits of Hendersonville, I would assume.
But a traffic light on Caldwell wouldn't be.
Well, I, I'm assuming that Caldwell is in, it belongs to Hendersonville and I would look to Public Works to answer that question, whether or not Caldwell belongs to Hendersonville.
I guess you could make the same argument, though you got a golf course that runs right up to the street, that's in the city of Goodlettsville. We don't know. But the other thing that we had a lot of conversation about was all the dirt that had been moved into the site and whether there was a land disturbance permit or where did that all come from? And how, how does that affect the existing flood map?
Certainly.
Talk a little bit about that.
Yes, and unfortunately, that was not done with my advice and I've made that plain to the city and staff. We've met with Public Works and engineering. Right now, from coming out of Public Works, they have put a timeline on Mr. Runyon to provide that flood study to show what the effects are of what he's done. And I believe that date is October, November, when he has to have it done or the end of October, which we're already 70% of the way there. TDEC has been involved, the city has, has done their job by identifying what he has done and enforcing violations and making sure that he gets it rectified. So it's unfortunate that this is coming through at the timing of when he did that, but, and I'm not gonna say they're completely unrelated because he was, had somebody that had some material and he thought, hey, I've got this project coming down the pipeline, he thought he was making a wise decision. Unfortunately, it sort of muddies the water with a process like this, I get it.
With all due respect, until we kind of know what that, that is, I'm, I'm probably a no vote tonight as to changing the zoning to allow for this.
And if that's, I mean, I certainly understand that and I'm not, I think that having the flood issue worked out is very important considering that he's already moved a lot of dirt. And so if that is the case, then I would, if that's sort of the consensus of the body, then I would ask for a deferral until we can get the flood study wrapped up.
Before I entertain a motion on that, I want to, and this is for your benefit, quite frankly, I want to continue discussion on that in case there's some other things that you need to go back and just.
So certainly, I mean, yes.
So, and I kind of just had a comment and I appreciate the explanation of why you put in the dual traffic circles, what you did. I'm not in love with them for two reasons, I don't like the aesthetics, quite frankly, but even more importantly, it looks very close to Caldwell Drive there on that end. I just imagine a scenario of somebody running late and especially with the way traffic can get kind of hairy in Caldwell. You've got JP2 down the road, you've got Mossright Park and everything that goes on there. Somebody turned in there a little too fast on that, they could very easily lose control on that. So that's coming in from, I'm imagining a scenario. So, that's coming in from, I'm imagining a scenario where they're coming in from Hendersonville, they're crossing the road on that, coming in a little bit. That concerns me from a safety standpoint on that. I appreciate the explanation, when you said wanting to save pasture on that. Can we put back up the aerial view on that, if you don't mind, please? I'm going to ask you on this, if you can help me out, if you wouldn't mind just kind of walking over there and just kind of explaining, because you mentioned that you proposed, I guess, an S, an S drop. Yeah, sweeping curve on that. Would you kind of help for where that would go? Okay, and that's what I wanted to get a visual of. I appreciate that. And like I said, I respect where he's coming from on that. Is there a secret option C that y'all can do on that, that kind of...
So, Mr. Runyon's at his child soccer game tonight, and I can get with him.
Okay, okay. I would like to see that. That'd be one thing that is, and I did mention specifically that I wouldn't even entertain anything else until it lined up there with coming out of 12 Stones. And so, I do appreciate y'all addressing that, but there's a few other things I would like to see on that. Other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hasty?
I'd actually, we're, if you're boarding horses, are, is there a barn there for storage?
I believe he has a barn under construction at this time, that he has permitted with the city.
He has a barn under construction at this time?
Yes, sir.
And I assume he didn't have to have a permit to build it?
I, I don't mean any disrespect. I, I don't know. I'm not...
If it's agricultural, agricultural use, he may not have.
That's correct, but I'm not...
If, if he is boarding horses and he's building a barn, you know, there's going to be other activities. You know, where are people going to park that come to ride their horses? You know, that's an activity that's just not shown. You know, there's a lot of little things, I think, that could enhance your, your plan would make it easier to digest. I mean, I think it's a good question, you know, who paved Caldwell Drive last? Whose it belonged to? You know, and, you know, the city's not going to put up a traffic light for the city of Goodlettsville for 12 Stone Crossing.
Oh, no, and, and yes, you're right, yes.
That, and, you know, and granted, you know, 22 homes is not going to warrant a traffic signal.
I believe you. Yes, sir, I'm in agreement with you.
It's not even going to come close. It doesn't even come close to our own standards for requiring a traffic study. So, I, but it's going to be entering Caldwell Lane, across the Goodlettsville Street, and it's a hazard area. There may need to be an intersection study of some kind based on 12 Stones and this, and what might be impacted there, more so than a traffic impact study. But there's a lot of little things, I think, you could, you do enhance your opportunity for approval.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from commissioners?
And I'll piggyback off what Commissioner Hasty said there. It's some clarification. You mentioned, obviously, the horse boarding is an amenity. Is that an amenity just for residents? Is that going to be something that'll be open to the public? Just some clarity on that, because that, obviously, pardon the pun, that's a horse of a different color than, depending upon what that is there on that. If it's just for residents, y'all can throw things at me for that bad pun. I apologize. But that just, that obviously paints it in a different light on that. So, just kind of some clarification on that. But Commissioner Evans?
It looks to me like we need to, I, I think what maybe is happening, we're trying to save the entrance into the property as it exists. Is that correct, or?
Not necessarily, no, sir. He knows he's going to have to, that if you've been out there, there's a masonry brick wall on each side of the driveway. That's going to have to come out, and it's going to have to be widened. And so, pretty much everything that's going to be a part of this development is going to be brand new. The only thing that we would try to preserve would be his, a large portion of his concrete that's already there. But what would be utilizing and accessing this subdivision is going to be all brand new.
There is a lot of concrete there, and I guess I understand that the way the house is facing, he may be trying to preserve his front yard pasture and then the, to the north side, I guess, the left side of the, of the house to look out over the field. I guess I would kind of want to do the same thing myself. But the fact remains that if we are looking at that kind of an intersection there, across intersection, it would almost need to look like the entrance to 12 Stones on the other side to, to keep from having to have a traffic light. I just don't see any way that's going to work otherwise. But if you're going to look at some of that, I'd like to see something on that intersection that's a little bit more appropriate than what we have.
Other questions, comments from commissioners?
Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion that we defer until next month on that. How do we need to, with the public hearing being closed on this, do we need to open it back up?
I think you'd need to reopen it back up, and then we'll, we'll give notice to the same owners that we sent notice to before to let them know what's going on.
Well, that I'm going to make a motion that we continue this to next month, reopen the public hearing on that. And can I get a... Okay, and I'm just going to confirm this is per request of the applicant, the deferral is on that. So, Commissioner Hardwick?
So, I have a question. They're obviously deferring because they keep, we keep asking more questions. But at the end of the day, do we need to have a vote that says, regardless of what they do, are we willing to change this zoning from a state residential to allow for 21 homes? When if you go back and look at that aerial, there's four houses, and they were going to stick 22 off in the back. And no matter what they do, we may not ever be willing to make that change.
The way to get that across would be to vote no on the deferral. That would just, we've got a request from the applicant on that. I'll just kind of editorialize on that. My openness and willingness would just be, honestly, see what they come back with on that. I mean, it just, I understand that it is in keeping with 12 Stones, but...
I was going to keep dragging it along.
I appreciate that, yeah. Yeah, and I think that's very fair on that. And so, the way to kind of address that would be to vote no on the deferral. But we do have a motion that made on the floor per request of the applicant to defer to next month and to reopen that public hearing. Can I get a second on that motion, please? All right, we have a second from Commissioner Altizer, and we will now go into a roll call vote on the deferral request.
What are your results?
Motion to defer per applicant was approved. Five nays, two, sorry, five yeses, two nos, no abstains.
We'll see you next month. Next up on the agenda is Norman Creek, Phase Three. Grant, I believe this is your project, and we have a representative from the developer here as well. Y'all will just kind of stand by the same process on that. And, but Grant, I'll let you get us started.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a little bit different situation from the previous semitole. This is part of a final development plan request for Norman Creek Phase Three. The preliminary development plan for Norman Creek Phases One through Three were all approved in 2006, all three phases at the same time by the city of Hendersonville. Phase Three had 78 lots approved in the PDP, and proposed FDP here has 32 lots, which is significant reduction in the number of lots that are, that are vested with that, that Phase One through Three approval. The 2006 PDP had a connection Forest Park. CSDG has stated that since Forest Park approval back in 2018 or 19, that the grades were not feasible to make that connection. There's also a, I think, a major gas line that runs down between the property line. So, they, they felt it wasn't feasible, and Forest Park was approved at that time without the connection. Since then, they, they have since brought this final development plan back to us, and without the, without any connections, as you can see here. However, initially, they, they did look at that, that connection with, with the retreat at Norman Farm. And in doing so, they held a public meeting with the county and residents out there, and that did not, they received quite a bit of negative feedback. And because the county, that would be a brand new change with them, as opposed to this being part of a, a approved development plan that's vested. So, in, in doing this, they, these lot sizes, they have made these larger from the 78 lots to the 32 lots. These are 9,000 square feet to 19,400 square feet approximately. From the, the previous approval to now with this approval, or now with this proposal, it's 13,500 square feet to 28,000 square feet. And then, two items that could be considered a substantial change from the PDP. They've both been addressed by the engineer agreeing to change those things. One of those things was the walking trail that in the 2006 approval went up on the north side of all the Lowe's lots, on the north side of that, that Phase Three portion, and had a gazebo and some, some significant number of benches and things there. They have, they did not have that on this previous approval, but they have since agreed to that staff comment, and we've spoken with the engineer, and they said that they will. They've talked to the developer, and they will extend that trail to, to more of a, a 2006 approval type of, of length and amenity situation. The, in addition, there did have some elevations that they submitted with this, and some of the, some of the elevation, the exterior materials that were looked at are not what was part of the PDP approval. Essentially, with the PDP approval for Norman Creek, there were, I believe, three elevations that, that were all mainly brick and stone. They, Norman Creek Phases One and Two, that was approved, the final development plans were approved with some hardy accents on the, on the, like, the roof lines and things like that, but they, they did not have the, the number of, what am I trying to say? They, they did not have the amount of hardy that are being presented in these, these renderings here. They have agreed to change that to ensure that they, they meet that, that Norman Creek Phase One and Two standard with mostly brick and stone, with hardy accents. And, but yes, so, so, yeah, I don't think it is a, is a question of whether or not it's harder to get it approved in the city or county. It's just that, in this instance, this is something that was actually approved in '06, and the county approval would be a whole new, brand new approval to, to change that. So, so I understand that concern, but, but it is a little bit different situation than, than what they have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Anything that y'all would like to add? If you don't mind introducing yourself.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Rose Schmellin. I'm the planner on the project. I'm with CSDG. We've loved working on this project so far. It's been great to work with you guys, and we think it's a great proposal, especially given the previously approved plan. As Grant said, it's a previously approved PDP, and we're significantly reducing the number of lots. We're also increasing the lot sizes, and the amount of open space for our proposed site plan is increased as well from about 34% to over 60%. So, we're excited to be able to bring that forward to you guys. The previous PDP had a stub to Forest Park, as Grant mentioned. And so, originally, we were trying to kind of maintain that, those two connections and connect down to Norman Farm. We did have a neighborhood meeting with those residents, and we were met with a lot of opposition. They were not pleased with that proposition. So, in listening to them, we went ahead and took that out and are now proposing just the single connection, since we no longer have the access to the Forest Park connection. And lastly, as Grant mentioned, we are in process of lengthening the walking trails. We're going to add back in the gazebo per the previously approved PDP. And then, also, the last thing I want to mention is that we're, we're also going to be changing in our plan that intersection, we're going to make it just a normal T-intersection to facilitate traffic flow after discussions with the city engineers. Okay. Again, we're excited to bring this project to you, and we are available for questions, should you have any.
Thank you. Questions, comments from commissioners? Try it again. Questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hasty?
And I think the reduction in the lots' number, larger lots, you know, I think it's good. Of course, you're dealing with very tough terrain in the area. Everybody in that area is. But there's one thing that I brought up before here. I think we're, we're beginning to get to the point where we're boxing ourselves in as far as connectivity is concerned with the streets out in that part of the city. We need connectivity, and here's a problem. You know, they want to connect onto this subdivision because they can't get a connectivity somewhere else. You know, we need that connectivity for first responders, police, or fire, and a lot of other reasons, traffic being one of them also. So, what they're doing is good, and we may not be able to do much more here. But I think a connectivity study for that whole area is something that we internally need to look at from the city's standpoint. Because we're getting ourselves filled in for some little boxes if we don't, if we don't watch it. But I mean, I don't know what you do in a case like this, you know?
You obviously heard, I believe you were here the whole time, you heard public comments, and you alluded to neighborhood opposition on that. How would you address the comments that you heard this evening? Is there anything that you can do to delay that they're concerned? How would you address those?
That's a great question. I mean, I think the best thing we have to offer, we've, we've sort of already touched on a bit, is that, you know, we're reducing the number of lots by more than half from what was previously approved, and we're trying to bring a, you know, a very strong, nice product to the neighborhood. We're trying to be conscious of the, you know, the, the topography and kind of the need in that area for something, something nice to make, make the approved plan a little more palatable.
Other questions? Okay, Director Free?
What, you know, one of the concerns, I think, the, what the, what the neighbors were maybe expressing was really mostly, I think they, they kind of, in what they said, kind of acknowledged that it's going to be pretty nice and, and everything, and that it's less lots. But I think one of their concerns is probably construction traffic. And so, like on, you know, or if you have somebody here that could answer it, on the number of homes that you have here, I mean, what, what kind of, what kind of timeframe are you talking as far as how long that you would have homes under construction with that number of lots? And that, that would be helpful just to, I understand this is... That would be helpful just to, I understand this is a by right development, and the preliminary development plan's already been approved, and this is just the final development plan. But that would, I think that would be helpful for us just to be aware of as well.
Okay. My name's Kevin Atwood. I'm with Castle Rock Communities. We would be the builder in here. With thirty lots, these are going to be a higher-end home, and it's very market-driven, but I would expect eighteen months to two years for complete build-out.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from commissioners? I see y'all, this is time for commissioner. Other questions, comments from Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment here. We're backfilling in the city. We're filling up our leftovers. We're going in the hard parts now. We've built out on the nice, level lots on the great big streets, and we're getting back in the corners. We've approved Football Five on a piece of property that, you saw my negative vote, I just don't think it'll fit there, still don't. And I would like to also ask that we revisit these parking spot rules. This is off this subject, but if ours are wrong, let's fix them. If they're right, let's adhere to them. And when we build something on a piece of property that's this tough, I agree with Commissioner Hasty, we've got to figure out a way to make this connect. This is another one-way-in and one-way-out. It's a bottleneck, and we need to start looking at this really closely. I understand, we've got a development plan on something that was passed a long time ago, and we don't have a lot of options. But we need to look at a way to hook these people up, not just for police and fire, but just for everyday people. If you bottleneck people and they're all coming out in the same place, you've got the same thing that we were talking about a few minutes ago on the Caldwell. You start putting too many people on the street in the wrong place, you're going to have accidents, you're going to have problems. So I would like to see us revisit a couple of things here, like Commissioner Hasty, and also these parking rules.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hardwood?
See, to go back to, you heard what the folks said here. From what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing, there really is no way to address their concerns. There's only one way in and one way out. When it's construction workers and pickup trucks, that's one thing. But with the big trucks, when you're building the road and doing the grading, there's just, there are no other options for getting those vehicles in there.
I would say not in this particular case, no.
And so what did the county tell you, no?
The county didn't tell us no. We were in conversations with the county about making this change. We had a neighborhood meeting with the residents of Norman Farm, which again is the, well, you know, the neighborhood to the south, and they were the ones who largely opposed the connection.
I guess I'm not really understanding, but, so you did not approach the county because the residents, because that section of the subdivision is in the county, so to connect in with them, you would have to have had the county's approval?
Correct. So I'm sorry, Ryan Lovelace, CSDG engineer on the project, also with Rose. That's correct. So to back up a little bit, quite a few months ago, we started this process, and he said this is with Castle Rock, which it is today, but it's also used to be the Jones Company, which built all of Norman Farms out there. So it's a same group, it's just it's changed names over time. So they are the owners of the Norman Farms pud. At the time, we went to the county and said, hey, we would love to expand Norman Farms to create this estate area of Norman Farms. There'll still be a connection to Norman Creek, which is the one to the left on the plan, but also would be a connection to Norman Farms to expand Norman Farms. We honestly thought it would be very, I think everybody'd be excited about it. A state area, nice homes, half the lots that it was, but we were completely wrong. With the county's, part of their process of changing the pud is we have to have a neighborhood meeting, and that's what we did at the Norman Farms amenity area. We had it, went through the process, and what's great about neighborhood meetings, they were very loud and clear. Nobody wanted that connection. So we said, okay, it's part of that process, now we hear you, we will just take that off, we won't change Norman Farms at all, and we'll come back and go through the city on a previously approved project with less lots, more open space, and no stub to Forest Park. Forest Park stub was removed seven years ago, I guess it was, through the process. It's a thirty percent grade, and just for grade purposes, ambulance and fire trucks have to be on ten percent. I mean, we're talking about a really steep area. So it's obvious why Forest Park didn't have the stub road, but we were required to have a stub there. It can't be physically built. So that's where, what we're talking about is the bottom-right corner of the plan. So that's the story. We would love to have the Norman Farms connection, but it was very loud and clear that nobody wanted it. So it's not a county asking us to do it or asking us not to do it, we just went through the process.
So I guess this is really a question for staff. We don't really have any options, do we?
No, as Grant had explained, this is already, even though it's way back in 2006, this was Phase Three of that preliminary development plan that was approved, there it is right there, for the entirety of Norman Creek. And the other two phases that have already been built over the last, really, I guess, six, seven years, they were Phase One and Two, and then the very back part here is Phase Three. So it has one of the two steps, and the one step is the most important because that's where you get the entitlement. So basically, that's the zone change and the lock-in of what you can do. And then now, we're at a point where it's the final development plan, and as long as the final development plan is significantly compliant or better than the original, then they, you know, you could do that. It's also, they're not proposing this, but the number of lots are almost doubled on what was originally approved.
Right.
And so they have the right to that many lots. So that's a part of, when we talk about entitlement or what their right is to the property, that's what that approval gives them. And then this is just a review to look at that. Grant may have some additional to add.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the things with these preliminary development plans, too, when you look at this, it shows a connection to the south as well there. And that was one thing that, there were some slope issues there, and then when the county approved Norman Farm, Norman Farms, they did not include that connection. So we ended up making that a cul-de-sac on our end. We are definitely fans of connectivity, and we definitely want that. I did have several discussions with CSDG about the connection with Forest Park, and as well as talked to the Forest Park developer. To try to get that connection, to try to save that, that is for connectivity purposes. However, they have stated that the engineering is just not there with the slopes that are on-site there. And so a lot of times, these PDPs are very conceptual, and once they actually get on-site, and of course, you know, things have changed since 2006 with technology, there's a lot more LiDAR and things available, where they're able to really kind of tell what the slopes are and how it can be engineered better now than almost twenty years ago. But while those things were available back then, it's a little bit better these days to kind of look at that on the preliminary side. But yeah, it's kind of one of those things, we just do the best we can and try to make those connections preliminarily, and then if they're not there, then try to work it out as the projects, you know, go through the process of the final development plans and construction plans.
So I guess it goes back to the question I started with. We're in a pickle.
Yeah, there's not.
It's approved, they have the right to do it, we hear what the neighbors are saying, but there's no way.
Yeah, there's.
Nothing we can do.
There's very limited in regards to this connectivity that could be done.
So we're better off with construction traffic for a lot less units over what's approved now.
Yes.
It's good to have to live with what's there now, to some extent, if we're there.
And that's, I'll echo that as well. That's kind of where, you know, we're dealing with something that was approved eighteen years ago, which literally seems like a lifetime ago. Now, my hair was a little bit different color, not as much gray at that time, but that's where we're stuck on this. And I will say, appreciate the way that this looks a lot better than what the alternative is on that, like the reduction lots and elevations of the homes being proposed on that. Very sensitive to what the neighbors are saying, too, but that's a choice that we have, is because we say no to this, and y'all got the right to what was there in 2006, which I don't think any of us want on that. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve with all staff comments. Can I get a second on that, please?
Yeah, don't worry.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Hasty. We have a second on that. Now move into roll call vote.
Motion has been approved with seven yeses, zero noes, and zero abstains.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Director Free would like to comment.
Yeah, just, I heard.
Your community of vote. Don't listen to us, listen to them. Yeah. Live. Not voting for any of you.
Next up on the agenda, we have item nine, site plans. This is for Sumner County Health Department in Hendersonville, their site plan. Timothy, I believe this is yours.
Sure. So this project could have been placed on consent agenda, but the response to staff comments didn't get worked out till this afternoon. So this is, the Sumner County Health Department is currently located next to Merrill Hyde Magnet School. They've got about, I think it's like about a forty-four, forty-five hundred square-foot facility there. They are proposing to tear that building down and replace it with a somewhat larger building. I think it's about seven thousand one hundred eighty-five square feet, and then increase their parking capacity by about nine parking spaces. The new building will be a brick building, and it complies with our requirements, and they've agreed to all staff comments.
Thank you. Is there a representative from?
Marshall Boyd, representative in the county.
Yeah, anything you'd like to add to?
Uh, no, I think Timothy covered it.
Okay. Any questions, comments from commissioners? Hearing none, see, Commissioner Hasty.
We approve with all staff comments.
Thank you. We have a, we've got a motion and a second, and we will go into a roll call vote on that.
Motion has been approved with seven yeses, zero noes, and zero abstains.
Thank you. Thanks, Marshall. Next up on our agenda is item ten, staff-level projects that have been approved. I'll turn this over to Director Free, and he can kind of guide through the section.
Yes, staff-level projects that have already been approved. Alexander Commercial Final Platte, the Drake's Creek Inn Site Plan. They're doing exterior and site improvements over at the hotel over there at Drake's Creek Inn. I think it used to be called Relax Inn, is that correct? So we got a new name. Indian Lake Village, Phase Eight, Section B, Lot Fifty-Two, re-subdivision platte is approved, as well as TriStar Hendersonville Medical Center Bed Expansion and Elevator Edition over at the hospital. Projects that are pending, a parking lot at fourteen oh one Avondale Road. We're still working with the broken outfitters over at the park on the lake. Jackson Townhomes, Phase Two Elevations. They had some changes in the elevations, and they're in compliance with the spirit of what was approved. The Retreat at Indian Lake Mail Center, just, I think it's a mail kiosk that's been approved. Stonecrest, Phase Five, Section Two Walking Trail. These are some improvements, including pickleball courts as an amenity out at Stonecrest, the new Stonecrest Development. So that's, it looks really nice. Verizon Small Cell, adding small cell facilities on Anderson Lane and Indian Lake Boulevard. And I can answer any questions if anybody has any questions on those, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, comments, Commissioner Hasty?
Yeah. What's Jackson Townhomes doing on elevations?
What they're doing on the elevations, is you know how the doors were so far up, and they had those stairs that had to go up so far, and then it came out? They redid, it's a new ownership that purchased the rear of those, and so they've redone the exteriors and brought the doors down, and actually, it's quite attractive. And it fixes a lot of those issues with that first phase, how that door was so far up. But as far as looks-wise, it's the same, or I would think, probably, Grant, a little better than the first phase.
Have they put in more attractive power poles out there?
I'll let Grant address that.
So they did present us a drawing of that, and it looks like they used the same old drawing that they had previously, to say it in plain speak. But they, we did make a comment that we need to show, have the NES electrical planned for the rear before we approve anything, and we need to make sure there's no new poles.
Well, I wouldn't vote for any change unless they moved that one pole they got in my neighbor's backyard. It's a personal issue for me, and I'd vote that way here on this board, because I think when everybody approved that plan, they were of the opinion and the understanding that all utilities were to be underground. And that didn't happen.
Yes, sir.
So if you bring it here, I'll vote no, unless that one pole is moved. And at least he could have put it on the other side of the road in his development and in front of the guy, right in the guy's backyard in Stony Brook. That's one that really fell through the cracks, in my opinion. And I don't know who to blame. I don't know that everybody's blamed NES. NES says we're going to do what we want to do. Well, why are we requiring underground utilities if NES is going to tell us what to do, when they want to, where they want to? We might as well scratch that from our regulations. Because if it's something that's supposed to be done, get it done. And it can be done, no problem. They're saying, well, it costs too much money. Well, you can build roads on grades that are thirty percent if you're willing to spend the money. Have you ever driven from Knoxville to Asheville, North Carolina? They can do it on the interstate that way. So money should not have been an issue for that power pole. And that one needs to be moved, in my opinion. I'm shutting.
Any other questions, comments on staff-level projects that either are pending or are Seeing none, we're going to go to item ten. We've got three resolutions all having to do with acceptance of streets, and I'll ask for a little guidance on here, since they're all relative to Durham Farms, do we need to take these separately, or can we group them together?
I think you can combine those. These have come out of the BOMA Public Works Committee as approved, so I think you could group those all together.
I'll move to a group.
We've got a motion and a second, and a motion for approval is grouped together, and so we will move into a roll call vote on that, on the street acceptances.
Motion has been approved with seven yeses, zero abstains, and zero noes.
then Zach will be able, be, be taking over those responsibilities, but we're, we're very happy to have Zach. And Zach, was there anything you wanted to say? You don't have to.
I just want to say thank you for the warm welcome and to the family of the city of Hendersonville, and I am excited to do work for the city and help build a amazing community.
Thank you, Zach. Welcome aboard. Congratulations.
One other thing that has to do with personnel is Tim Nicholson, our zoning enforcement officer. He used to be with the Police Department, but he will be retiring in November, November the sixth is his last physical day at work, and after forty years of service, so that's amazing, and we're definitely going to miss Tim. And we have started, yesterday, we started with the recruitment and the posting of his position, so over the next couple of weeks, we'll be interviewing people to, for that position, and hopefully find a quality candidate, just as we did in, in Zach, in, in our recent, recent search. And that's everything that I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Free. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion for commissioner albatross. Can I get a second on that? Second from Commissioner Silkwood. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all for your time this evening. We're good to go.